And I'd like to welcome everybody. All alderpersons are present, and we do have a vacancy which we will attend to tonight. The next item on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation.
My pleasure. On the United States of America, consider your public service to the same one nation, under God, in this world.
Okay, reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on June 15th, what are your wishes?
There was one typo in there. It said that I voted yea and nay on item number eight, and I actually voted aye on that. I moved to approve with that slight change.
We have a motion by Dean. And a second by Bemke. Too slow. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven a's, zero nays. Next item on our agenda is, "Consider the appointment of a District Seven alderperson and/or consider ordering a special election due to the resignation of District Seven alderperson that is Kubusak." What are your wishes? Jay?
Before we get too far into this, Jennifer had sent out the information with the cost of this. Could maybe just give a brief explanation, please?
Okay, so your estimate includes both a special election and a special primary if needed. A primary would be needed if there are three or more candidates running for the same position. I, the first, the first bracket of estimated costs on the special primary is for out-of-pocket costs. After that, I have additional expenses that are part of the election but not necessarily out-of-pocket, and that would include wages for the county clerk, myself, the deputy clerk, and our Public Works team who helps us set up and does the signing, signage and all of that. So the real cost of a special primary is $67,019,52. The out-of-pocket cost would be $4,093,02. And then the same thing for the special election. The estimated cost, $4,065,64, and the total cost, the total expenses would be $66,9214. These costs do include the costs given to us by Trent at the county. There are expenses that the county picks up when it's a normal, in the normal election cycle and it's a countywide election, but since this would be a special election, the city would be responsible for picking up all those costs, such as coding and printing of the ballots, et cetera. And by the way, Trent is on Zoom if anybody has any questions about his costs.
So I think the first thing we need to decide is whether or not we're going to appoint somebody today, and then whether or not you're going to have a special election, and when that special election would be held. I don't know, see if you can clarify that maybe.
Right, because I think some expressed, or at least one person expressed last month that maybe they would prefer that there not be anyone appointed today and you would have a special election, so the position would remain vacant until the special election. The alternative is obviously to appoint someone today, but then you still would need to determine, you know, how long that person would be in that position, whether it would, whether you'd have a special election and how soon. So maybe the first item to consider is whether to appoint someone today, and then you can, if, depending on how that goes, then you would decide when a special election might be. So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sherry?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to appoint tonight and have them run or be appointed until the next election, which would be April.
So we have a motion to, okay, so let's, so a motion and a second, we'll take care of that first, on appointing somebody to fill that vacancy tonight and then hold a special election for that district at the next scheduled election, which is April of next year, or a primary in February. Okay. And the next order to speak is Jake, then Jake.
Thank you. So last time, I spoke about how I think we should absolutely have a special election considering this term is only two months in. I said last month, now three months in, so let it be known that a month was wasted that we could have been in the works putting this towards an election, because of the fact that this is a democracy and that's how we should operate. I don't think it's on any of us council members who don't represent District Seven to tell them who should represent them. We have two gentlemen here tonight who would like to represent them, and I think that's up to District Seven to decide, not us council members. That's my thoughts on it, and I, the $13,000 that it costs to run an election, to me, that's the cost of democracy. I mean, each election has a cost to it, that's the way it goes. I know if I lived in District Seven, I would like to have a vote and my say in it. So whether we appoint someone tonight till next April, that's up to the council, but I personally won't be voting in anything in favor unless it's having a special election as soon as possible, which in my eyes could happen within, you know, I think we said last time, it would take, what, a couple months? But we lost a month now, so that's my opinion on it. I won't be voting for anything that doesn't allow the citizens of District Seven to speak their voice as soon as possible.
Thank you. Jay?
So I just, I have two questions. The first one is, is not too long ago, there was a vacancy, and how was that handled? And my second question is, let's say we make it to a special election in the spring, would that, would that be, just for the remainder of that term? Does that have to be spelled out in the motion? Or is that just the Zoom?
No, it would not need to be spelled out. And actually, the default without any council order is, because of the timing of when the resignation is, would be to have it in the spring of April 22 to have the special election, to have a term until April of '23. So you don't even, you don't have to specifically make a motion or have an order regarding that. I mean, it's good to do that, but that's actually the default in the statute. If he would have resigned before, before, was it before June 1, then it's possible that it, then it would have possibly been in the, well, we don't have a general this year, so then it probably would have still been April. If it would have been only one year left in the term, then they're presumed not to have an election, but there are different dates in there, so the default basically is the spring election, and it was, and it would be for the remainder of the term, which is a 2023 term. When Lee resigned, then they appointed, and then was there, there was a...
And then there was a special election at the spring election.
And it wasn't that much longer than, it wasn't that much farther than now.
Right.
I was actually one of the candidates that...
Uh huh. But then there was still a year left in that, on that term after the special election? Or did that coincide with...
No, no, that was, he took, I think it was, the special election was in like, maybe October.
No, it was part of a regular election. We didn't hold a special election other than...
No, 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 that, I mean, the appointment. I didn't mean, I'm sorry, the term, I thought, there was no special, it was the, it was, he was appointed and then...
Until April. Until April, and then there was election, yeah.
And it was an interim seat, so it wasn't that much longer than we're talking about.
So October to April, and then the term was over, and then, so they elected Dean for the next two years.
Dean?
Basically, that's kind of what I was just going to talk about, the fact that it really wasn't that long, that Mr. Krasinski was in the interim. It was, we didn't have a special election. He was appointed pretty much the same way we're talking about doing tonight, where people came and spoke and sent in resumes, and that was pretty much set up. I'm not sure the exact time, but it wasn't that much longer. It was much, not much later than we're talking about doing this exact same thing now, so. I would be in favor of that, of appointing in a similar fashion.
Yeah?
I just wanted to point out that if we wait for the special election until April, those costs, the $13,000 virtually goes away for that part of it, because it's held concurrently with the regular spring election, so it would just be our normal election cost. So it's not any more out-of-pocket if we wait till April, so.
And there would be a turnover.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Just a quick question, and this might be a silly one. Is there a need for a special primary if we only have two candidates that are interested?
No. A primary is only needed if you have three or more people running, so there may not be a primary.
And right now, we have two interested parties?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we don't, we don't know...
But there could be more.
Yeah. If, if a person's appointed today, that person is the incumbent, but there still would be election, people still have to put in nomination papers, they might not run again. Five people might run, so the election is open to everybody again, it doesn't matter who the incumbent is.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, Jay.
Mr. Stack asked to be recognized.
Did you want to discuss whether or not we appoint on this item, or do you want to discuss about potentially being appointed? To fill the position? Because we, we're going to allow you both to speak, but, okay, go ahead, Jim. If somebody's willing to. Okay, thank you. There you go.
There we go. Okay. As some of you know, not all of you, I have sat on the council, and in fact, the first time I sat on the council was many years ago when Jerry Crowe left Consolidated, or one of the mills here to go to Arkansas and take a spot there. And at that time, there was 21 members on the council. So I had to walk, so to speak, and talk with each of the 21 members and let them know I was interested, and I was appointed for a short time, and then Mrs. Eloye Spreme and I ran in the April election, and she won it, and so I came back later. As the mayor probably knows and others, the Seventh District has been an active district with people out running for election, and I was surprised to see Mr. Delaney here tonight. And what I would like to do is to extend to the members of the council that I would step down and let you appoint Mr. Delaney, and leave it go at that. I've had my opportunity to serve, this would give Mr. Delaney an opportunity to serve, and perhaps as you go forward, I truly believe that the, the term of service should be until Thad's would end, which would be in '23. I don't think you should put an artificial stop on what Mr. Delaney would be able to do. I would suggest that he, his appointment would be to fill the term of Mr. Kubusak, making it, making it fall in with the regular election cycle of the city of Wisconsin Rapids. And I thank Mr. Bemke for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Jim. So I guess just to confirm, Jim, you're withdrawing your request to be considered?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. So we still have a motion and a second on the floor to, to fill the term until April, and we need to dispose of that motion. So if there's no further questions, and the clerks ready, please cast your ballots on that motion. In April, correct.
To appoint.
That motion carried five a's and two nays. So we will be, so now we can discuss the District Seven position. What are your wishes? We obviously have one nominee here, or one interested candidate. Let me feel. What your wishes are? Go ahead, Sherry. Like to say something? Sounds good. Just make sure the microphone, there's a green button, or the push button in the screen.
Hello, I'm Patrick Delaney. I had sent in that email that you all have read, I'm sure. I'm owner of Best Place to Be Incorporated and Best Place to Be LLC. I'm surprised that James had found out. It is.
Okay.
Just to tell you a little bit about myself further, I am 100% for resident rights, and as you can see by what I do, I have a heart for people, and I think that the smaller governments, the city governments, I think are the most powerful in the country, so I'd be honored to be a part of it, and I'll answer anybody's questions.
Thank you, Patrick. What are your wishes, council?
I guess seeing nobody else to step forward, I may make a motion to seat Mr. Delaney for the Seventh District.
So we have a motion and a second to approve Patrick Delaney to fill the vacancy of District Seven until the spring election. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried five a's, one nay, and one abstention. Congratulations, Patrick. Come on up. Oh, we got to do some business too here. So we have to do, do the oath of office. So if you want to put your things down over next to Jake over there.
Speaking of that microphone, okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Patrick J. Delaney, having been duly appointed to serve as Seventh District Alderperson for the city of Wisconsin Rapids...
Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and of the state of Wisconsin...
And of the state of Wisconsin.
...and will faithfully discharge...
And will faithfully discharge.
...the duties of set office...
The duties of set office.
...to the best of my ability...
The best of my ability.
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Patrick, we'll also, we have HR here, so we can, you'll have HR paperwork to do, and Tyler Mickelson, our IT guru in the back, will help you with laptop and kind of go through some of those things for you, and get you a mailbox key, Jennifer can, and get you all set up. So the next item would be my appointments to the standing committees. I think for the ease of things, that without jumbling the committees too much, that we would leave the committees as they are, and Patrick will join Public Works Committee, and then I think right now, Public Works Committee, you three should probably meet and decide who's going to be the chairperson and the secretary. So I don't know if you want to take a quick moment and kind of figure that out, if you, if you three just kind of want to meet in secret. Matt? Hey, Matt. Also realize the chairperson of Public Works is also a member of the Wastewater Commission? And I, and yeah, that's a good point, and Legislative Committee, but I think in the past, the chairperson has appointed somebody else should their need, should you not be able to attend the meeting? Just something to consider. Nope, you can just tell us who is in which positions.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be taking the chair of Public Works, Mr. Zachar would be secretary, and Mr. Delaney would just be committee member.
And Tom Ray Oates, the chair of that, and also, also Jay Bemke. It's, yeah. Stay on. Why would it have to be... I don't think it... Oh. Isn't there? No, there's no item on there for that. Okay, tell me where. Oh, there it is, ten. No, it's down there. Well, we can take an order. So now we have, since Thad was the council president, we need to have an election of the common council president, so I would open the nominations or entertain nominations for that position.
I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Dean Veneman.
Here we have Dean Veneman. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jay Bemke.
Oh yeah, that's true. Are you interested, Dean? Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, can close nominations and guess we'd entertain a motion for unanimous consent for Dean Veneman to be council president.
I'll motion to appoint Dean Veneman as council president.
Okay. Motion by Jake, second by Sherry. Is there any further questions, discussion? Last chance, Dean. Okay, seeing none, please cast your...
Well, actually, this could be, could be, could be a secret ballot if you wanted to, but I'm assuming, well, I don't want to assume anything, so if someone wants to have a secret ballot, you can call for that, otherwise we'll use the board.
Mr. Mayor, would the city attorney define or speak to what the duties are...
For...
...of the council president?
Well, you would chair committee of the whole meetings, you would, in the event that the mayor was absent from a meeting, you would chair the regular council meeting. In the event the mayor was unable to perform his duties, the council president could step in during that period of incapacity or inability to do the duties. I think you get like $10 a month or something. I think there's a nominal, I don't know, I don't, I wouldn't do it for the money, a small amount. Do you want to reconsider?
So there are, there are duties that could be taken with this. It's not a laughable thing that goes with it that I think a lot of people think there are. There are, could be very serious duties that go with this. So have polls been closed? Nomination have closed?
Nomination had, nominations had been closed.
Okay. I just wanted to, so as we go through this, as we do, because I don't think people take stock into what, what this position really is or can be. I let tell it goes, went through again, because I've sat through this for 30 years, and I've sat through a lot of this where it's been a comical thing, a slap on the shoulder of who gets the position, for most of the time that I've been here. Fortunately, fortunately, it hasn't had to be used. I will be voting no. I will be voting no. For the reason that I'm just stating, who I asked for, because I doubt that anybody even looked up what the qualifications were. I knew what they were, what the duties were. I've asked several times for 30 years. Shane ran for mayor. He had the qualifications. And somebody that potentially would have to sit in that chair should have to have the qualifications, sit in that chair. And somebody that potentially would have to sit in that chair has to be one that has the courage to open his mouth and say things at times that people may not like. We're stuck with a council that's way too small. That I hope will change in the near future, but it will not until we get redistricting and all that into place. By a wisdom that was taken way too many years ago, that we thought we were way too big. And yes, we did, at, just at the start of this year, temporarily appointed a fill-in for an alderperson who was ill, or whatever the case was, could not attend the meetings. That I voted against to do it that way. So I followed suit again this evening in doing it that way. But anyway, on this, like I said, I will vote no. I hope in the future, as we go through these things, along with how we fill committee appointments and all that, that we look at what the duties all are on these. Obviously, we have a lot of brand-new people. Nothing against that at all. But I hope the people have looked at least two or three and four sentences that the duties of the committees are. The sentences of what they are. And, where finance is a big one in that, yeah, it controls a big pot of money. Public Works is a tremendous one in that what it deals with, street construction, reconstruction, digging everything up and all of whatever you want to get into. Sidewalks, sewers, the gamut that it runs of everything. And it takes courage. We're in the midst of how to spread out the dollars amongst the citizenry, citizenry and the business community on how things are paid for and that, so, so we can get on with our business, and we still have an hour and a half to go before the big thing in Wisconsin tonight takes place. But, just, it just gets to me that at times when we do this, that I really don't think that we, as elected citizens, elected citizens of the community, don't give much of a thought to the responsibility that goes with the job, the position, whatever you want to call it, elected position, and that then, that we look at what we put other people into. That there is. So, with that, Your Honor, thank you for your time, thank you, Madam Attorney, thank you for your explanation and that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray Oates. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve Dean Veneman as council president. Please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven a's, one nay. Next item of business is, I missed appointments, but we didn't have any this month, I don't believe. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't read correctly. All right, election of the House President. Next item is item number nine, which is common council appointment of an alderperson to serve as the alternate on the Ethics Board for a term ending November 1st, 2024, to replace Thaddeus Cobishack. Any volunteers?
I nominate Matt Zacher.
We have a nomination for Matt Zacher, do accept? Is there any other nominations? Yes. Hearing none, closed nominations, and entertain a motion for unanimous consent to appoint Matt Zacher as Ethics Board alternate?
So moved.
No motion by Veneman? And we have a second by Bemke? Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight a's, zero nays. On item 10, election of a chairperson and vice-chairperson for the Legislative Committee. Guess if Tom Ryan and Jay want to quickly meet to have an arm wrestle to who's going to get what appointment? How's it look, Tom? Good, thank you. All right, we are on to item 11. Consider for adoption the action of the Planning Commission meeting held on July 12th, which is only one page long this month. All right, so the Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on July 12th in the City Hall Council Chambers and via remote video conferencing. Those present are on file at the City Clerk's Office. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Item one was approval of the reports from June 7th, Plan Commission Meeting. That motion was by Daven to approve the report from June 7th, Plan Commission Meeting, and by Feath. That motion carried five a's, zero nays. Item two is Plan-21-0648, Calvary Baptist Church, a request for a certified survey map approval to create two lots and dedicate right-of-way at 469 Airport Avenue, parcel ID 3412873. That motion by Tao to approve the request for the certified survey map to create the two lots and dedicate right-of-way at 469 Airport Avenue, parcel ID 3412873, which was seconded by Gudrow. That motion carried five a's, zero nays. Item three is Plan-21-0608, The Goodness Properties, a request for a certified survey map approval to combine two lots, which includes the dedication of right-of-way at 540 Ninth Street South, parcel ID 3407153. Motion by Daven to approve the request for a certified survey map to combine the two lots, which include the dedicated right-of-way at 540 Ninth Street South, parcel ID 3407153, which was seconded by Feath. That motion carried five a's, zero nays. Item four is Plan-190938, Community Development. Action on a request to replace Chapter 46 sign code of the city's municipal code with a new sign code. Commission members and staff discussed and clarified various aspects of the code. JRCWRT added comments to that discussion. Motion by Daven to replace Chapter 46, the sign code ordinance of the municipal, of the city's municipal code with the new sign code ordinance as presented. This was seconded by Gudrow. That motion carried five a's, zero nays. Item five is adjournment. That was a motion to adjourn by Tao, seconded by Blazer. That motion carried five a's, zero nay. And that meeting adjourned at 5:23 PM, and I submit that for your consideration.
Moved to approve.
So we have a motion by Veneman? Good.
I just have a quick question about the Calvary Baptist. Currently, they have the church and the, there's two residential buildings on that, if you look at the map on here, there's this vacant right here, or there's a residential building right, right here, it's not captured in this picture. If they're going to separate this lot, do they have plans on, on this? Was that discussed at all, on separating out that other residential?
Yeah, they, they did not discuss, or was, at least there was no discussion on what that parcel that's going to be used for, that they're, they're breaking off? And I, and I'm not sure what their plans are with that parcel that they broke into a second lot. There was no discussion. I guess the request was just to divide them into two parcels. Is Kyle in? Oh, I'm sorry, Kyle's on, he should have spoken for him.
Is this in regards to the Calvary Baptist Church?
Yes.
Request, or the, or the other goodness request?
Calvary.
The church?
Yeah, the church.
Yeah, so they did not, they did not identify what the intent for the use would be. When we receive a request, we make sure that it meets the zoning district standards for lot size, lot width, and in this case, it does. And given the zoning, it could be used as a single-family or two-family use. I believe it does have enough size to be a duplex as well. So single or two-family would be permitted uses within that zoning district.
Anything further, Patrick? Okay. So, we have a motion by Dean, and a second by Ryan. Go ahead, Tom.
Thanks, Mayor. Kyle, with the signs, and I don't know if that really, it's in the, in this section tonight, but dealing with campaign signs and, and that type of stuff, in there, and I think it's nothing that it's new, but it has, I don't think it's new anyway. But it's not, those aren't supposed to be up until the first day of the election campaign period, and shall be removed within 10 days following the election. I know there's signs that haven't been taken down since the last, past election. I know signs have been put up since, already, for the next election, and the campaign periods haven't started. And obviously, signs that have gone up have been, new ones have gone up from people who ran in the last campaign. So obviously, they are running again, I take it. What can be done with that? People that know me know that I have been a longtime political advocate in that, but when our city is becoming, not just with campaign signs, but yard signs all over, and we're getting in our parks, along boulevards, of signs being put up and left there, advertising for different things, not candidates and that, but businesses and that type of stuff in right-of-ways. What can we do with that? Is there anything we can do with that? And I guess, and I guess with that then goes, what is the, what is the remedy? Having, having the tool here, what is the remedy? What is the penalty? What is the fine? And what is there to do that?
So with, with regards to the changes in the new sign ordinance, with regards to what are considered election campaign signs, we, we more so made sure that the updated ordinance reflects both the Wisconsin state statute for election campaign signs, as well as the content-neutral language and the federal government guidelines regarding content neutrality signs. And so with regards to what the sign says, we can't necessarily regulate who's on the sign. For example, there are times where an election campaign period may overlap. So you may have a presidential election in November, and that time period may overlap with an election campaign period in the spring of the following year. And so, it, there's a possibility that the same sign could exist within that, those two different election campaign periods, again, depending on the timing. But if, if there are no election campaigns occurring, and they're in violation of the said time in the new ordinance, then we can certainly follow up with notice of violation and implement penalty provisions under the municipal code.
Thank you, because some of these, there's no campaign, elections that are overlapping or anything, so, thank you, Kyle.
You're welcome.
Jake?
So just to clarify, signs supporting a cause per se that's non-political, are those still are, are fine to a certain extent? I, I guess I didn't read through all of it, but is there any changes being made to that?
So we do have what's coined another sign, I guess we're calling it like a free speech sign, that you're permitted to have, where you could have a sign, a wall sign, or a small freestanding sign that identifies, you know, whatever you'd like, as long as it's not, you know, advertising a product or a service. If it is advertising a product or a service, it would fall under like the permanent sign requirement. If it's not, if it's just, you know, you want a sign that says peace, or, or some other, you know, phrase, you're allowed to have that. There are certain sign requirements in the ordinance regarding the sign that's very small, and I believe it has to be permanently affixed, but that is, that is accounted for in the, in the new, the new sign code.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Patrick.
I'm really not a long-winded person, but I have followed this sign thing for quite some time, as it has been here. The, Wisconsin Rapids as a whole hasn't grown in 50 years, it's been shrinking. And I've looked at the proposal, there are some parts of it that I like, there are some that I'm not, that I really don't like. One thing that I would like to know is, with the current businesses, is there, are they grandfathered in, or is there going to be penalties? Or do they have to go through some government process to get a waiver for what they already currently have? I don't think we should be putting more I don't think we should be putting more burdens on businesses that are already established and already here.
There were a number of businesses that have attended the planning commission meeting, and Kyle could probably fill in a little bit more that he's been speaking with them, but there is such a, as a, I guess Kyle, you can clarify the date. There is, there's a as-is date, so they would be grandfathered the current existing signs. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kyle.
Right. That's correct. So, for example, one major difference between the old sign code and the new sign code would be sign height. So in some instances, I think you could have a 35-foot sign. If a business does currently have a 35-foot sign, after the adoption of this code that may have a maximum height requirement of 20 feet, the business can still maintain the sign, they can still repair the sign, you know, they can swap out lights if it's internally lit. If they voluntarily remove the sign, then it would lose that conformity. So I think, you know, as long as they're continuing to maintain the sign and use it for the same use, there's not an issue. If they, for example, want to add on to the sign, then they would have to bring the sign into compliance and meet, again, for example, the, the reduced height requirement. But otherwise, if they do nothing but maintain the sign, it would be permitted under the sign ordinance. It would just shift from a conforming sign to a non-conforming sign.
Yeah, we spent most of our time talking with sign companies and businesses because of the wave of electronic signage. And, and so there was a lot of discussion and, and working on that aspect of that sign Any further discussion? Seeing, seeing none, please cast your ballots. So, yeah, if a council member will recognize you, okay. Yes, come on up here. Yep, come up to the microphone, make sure the light's on. If you could state your name and your address.
My name is Renee Graff, 231 Drake Street. With these signs, what I hear Mr. Rayom saying is, these signs that litter our parkways and our sideways. So, are you going to be banning rummage sale signs, fundraiser signs, small business signs? Where does all of that fall into this? Because as he stated, people put them up and they don't take them down, they're there forever. But as kind of a small business owner, I chair quite a few fundraisers, and we depend on pushing that sign in the ground all over town for a week or so, or even up to a month before our event. And if you're going to look at banning that, maybe you should also look at banning all these memorials go up when people die. There's one on West Grand Avenue. The child lost its life 10, 15 years ago. There's still a memorial there today. How long are memorials? How far are you going to go to govern this? Just a question. Because I know in Stevens Point, I've put up signs there for a fundraiser, and they go up and rip them down. Fundraiser for the Shriners that give a date, and they're taken down. Our town is shrinking. Do we really want to hurt small businesses more? Just a thought before you vote. Thank you.
So, Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, there is no intent to nonprofits fundraising-type stuff or not currently in that ordinance to not allow them, correct?
Correct. If you reference page 43 of 262 of the council packet, you'll see under that, one additional temporary freestanding sign section, that's where we identify the free speech sign. We identify personal greeting and congratulatory-type signs. We identify yard signs, you know, announcing a rummage sale or garage sale. We identify property protection-type signage. And then I think the big one is, that she's referencing, is the quasi-public event signage, so announcing a non-commercial event, a celebration, a civic, educational, patriotic, religious, nonprofit organization, you still would be permitted to, to put those signs up with the owner's permission. Now, I think what some communities do or event organizers, organizers do is, is they tend to put those in the right-of-way, and if they're near an intersection for a stop sign, or they're in the vision triangle of, of an intersection of a stoplight, I know streets department and code enforcement staff have been told to remove those, just to, again, remove that possible detriment to the safety of the motorists and pedestrians. But again, if they are on private property, they would be permitted under that section of the ordinance.
Thank you, Kyle. That, um, Sheri?
I just want to clarify, I see where you're referencing that under number four, but it does say allowed to be erected one week prior to the event. So, they could only have it up one week prior to the event, and then it has to be removed upon the conclusion of the event or celebration, which would mean if they hadn't, if they had an event that day, and it ended at 4:00 PM, that has to be removed at 4:00 PM?
Well, if it said the next day, I mean, I, obviously, it's more complaint-driven, I would, I would think, but technically, when the event is over, much the same as the construction sign, when the construction is done, it needs to be removed. The election signs have, have dates on them, so, yeah, that would be the, after the celebration is over, or the event is over, the sign should be removed.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. And we are on to item number 12, is consider for adoption the action of the standing committees of the common council. Item A is Finance and Property Committee meeting held on July 13th. Mr. Rayom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance and Property Committee met at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, in the council chambers at City Hall. All committee members were present. The meeting was live on W Rapids Community Media Spectrum Channel 985 and Solaris Channel 3, or via WRCM Roku app, and was streamed live on the City of Wisconsin Rapids Facebook page. All members of Finance and Property Committee were present. Also in attendance were all the person Veneman, Mayor Blazer, Meredith Klecker, Matt Zakowski, and Tim Disorcy. Item one, call a meeting to order. Chairperson called the meeting to order at 4:32 PM. Item two, update from the Wisconsin Rapids Area Convention and Visitor Bureau. Meredith Klecker, Executive Director of the Wisconsin Rapids Area Convention and Visitor Bureau, gave a presentation on initiatives and activities of the WRACB for both 2019 and 2020. No action was taken. Item three, consider for approval, a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B wine licenses for Lady Queen of Heaven Parish for the premises located at 750 10th Avenue South for a parish picnic to be held on August 22, 2021, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It's moved by Bemke, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve the temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B wine licenses for Lady Queen of Heaven Parish for the premises located at 750 10th Avenue South for a parish picnic to be held on August 22, 2021, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Motion carried. Item four, consider a recommendation from statewide services to deny a claim from Amber Reyes for damages to her vehicle allegedly caused by a pothole near the intersection of A Street and Airport Avenue. It's moved by Rayom, seconded by Catnaugh, to deny the claim for Amber Reyes for damages to her vehicle allegedly caused by a pothole near the intersection of A Street and Airport Avenue. Motion carried. Item five was audited of bills. It's moved by Rayom, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve check number 8829 to check number 9199. Motion carried. Item six, adjourn, motion by Bemke, seconded by Rayom to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:00 PM. With that, Your Honor, move for adoption of the report.
Thank you. So, a motion and a second by Jake for the adoption of the finance report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion carried eight A's and zero nays. Item B is Committee, the whole meeting held on June 28, 2021. I guess our new council president, if you would be inclined to read that one?
A meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Wisconsin Rapids Common Council was held in the council chambers, City Hall, on June, Monday, June 28th, 2021, at 5:00. Public was delighted to listen to the audio of the meeting. President, President in the council chambers at City Hall were all the persons, Austin, Bemke, Catnaugh, Evanson, Veneman, Rayom, and Zachar. Absent was Council President Kubitschek, who was excused. Also present in the council chambers were Mayor Blazer, Joe Terry, Jennifer Gosick, Joe Bachman, and Kelly Warrington. Sue Schill appeared by a video conference. On item one, they called to order, city, excuse me, city clerk Gosick called the meeting to order at 5:15 PM. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Evanson, to appoint Alder Person Ryan, Chairperson of the Committee, in President Kubitschek's absence. Motion carried seven A's, no nays, and Alder Person Ryan presided over the meeting. Two, discussion regarding the development of a transportation utility. Transportation utility was discussed. No action was taken on the site. Number three, it was adjourned. There were no, there was being no further business before the committee. The Committee of the Whole adjourned at 6:15.
So, do we have a motion to place the report on file?
So, moved.
Motion by Dean, seconded by Jake, to place the report on file. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. There was no action, so. Motion carried eight A's, zero nays. Next item on our agenda is item C, Public Works Committee meeting held on June 28th, 2021. Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, June 28th, 2021, at 444 West Grand Ave in the common council chambers and via remote video conference. Myself and Matt Zachar were in attendance. Dad Kubitschak was absent. Others attending included Alder Persons Bemke, Catnatch, Evanson, Rayom, Veneman, Mayor Blazer, and Public Works Director, Mr. Terry. Item number one, call to order. The meeting was called to order at 5:12 PM. Item number two, discussion and possible action on the development of a transportation utility. Motion by myself, seconded by Zachar, to move forward with a trip-based transportation utility and direct staff to draft ordinance and policy language wherein, number one, maintenance activities remain in the general fund budget for now. Number two, current rate of capital replacement projects are performed by the utility, eliminating routine transportation project-related debt and special assessments. Number three, include $450,000 worth of asphalt surface replacement, generally allowed, allowing for between .5 and 1 mile of additional surface replacement per year. Motion carried, two A's, zero nay. Item number three was adjournment, motion by Zachar, seconded by Austin to adjourn. Motion carried two zero. The meeting was adjourned at 6:15 PM.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the report of the Public Works Committee for June 28th.
So, a motion and a second to approve that report. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none? Oh, go ahead, Patrick.
Was any action taken on the development of the transportation utility?
Yes, in item number two, they made a motion to approve.
Okay, just to approve it. All right, thanks.
You're welcome. Any further questions or discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's and one nay. Item D is Public Committee, Public Works Committee meeting held on July 6th. Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, July 6th, 2021, in the common council chambers and via remote video conference. Dad Kubitschak and Ryan Austin were in attendance. Matt Zachar was absent. Others attending are on file in the clerk's office. Item number one was called to order. The meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. Item number two, review preliminary resolution for West Jackson Street from West Grand Ave to the Jackson Street Bridge. Motion by Austin, seconded by Kubitschak, to approve the preliminary resolution of West Jackson Street from West Grand Ave to the Jackson Street Bridge. Motion carried two zero. Item number three, transportation utility model discussion, review and discuss draft ordinance language and outline possible scope of public outreach. The draft ordinance language was reviewed and discussed. Staff was directed to proceed with the draft general scope as presented. Item number four, review DPW monthly report. The DPW monthly report was reviewed. Item number five, review referral list. The referral list was reviewed. And item number six was adjournment. Motion by Austin, seconded by Kubitschak to adjourn. Motion carried two zero. The meeting was adjourned at 7:00 PM. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the report of the Public Works Committee for July 6th.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve that report. Is there any further discussion or comments? Seeing none? Oh, go ahead, Sheri.
I just wanted to know, I know I watched the movie, the meeting, in the draft ordinance language, I just was wondering where the status is of that. What's the next step, Joe? Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
So, the next step is Attorney Schill and staff are just reviewing the language to make sure that there aren't, you know, anything, any legal-type issues with it. So without changing scope, that's the, the next process. We also have to take a look at proposing some changes in the current ordinance language wherein special assessments are required and make some adjustments to those. Staff will be bringing those adjustments. I have to talk to Attorney Schill on the timing on that. I'm not sure if, if the adjustments and everything need to go back to committee, or because committees direct staff to proceed with the, the work if the whole thing goes before council. But those, those are the next steps, you know, in developing the, the language.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, obviously, I know you're taking care of it, but the ordinances would be changing due to the special assessments and that. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. We're on to item E, the human resources, the Human Resources Committee meeting held on July 13th. Jake?
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resource Committee was held on Tuesday, July 13th, at 5:30 PM via remote video conferencing originating from the first-floor conference room. All members were present. Also present were Kelly Warrington and Ryan Hartman. Meeting was called to order at 5:32. Item number two, discuss and consider for approval the review of the sick leave policy as presented. It was motion by Veneman, seconded by Evanson, to approve the revisions to the sick leave and pay, sick and paid leave policy as presented. Motion carried two zero. Item number three, there was an update on the wage study. There was no discussion, or there was a discussion and no action taken. Item number four was adjournment. Motion made by Veneman, seconded by Evanson to adjourn. Motion carried two zero. The meeting adjourned at 5:47 PM, and with that, I would ask for the adoption of the Human Resource Committee report.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Veneman. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight a's, zero nays. Item 13, reports of other committees, commission, boards, and departmental reports. What are your wishes there? Uh, go ahead, Jake. Okay.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by Vemke to approve and place them on file, and a second by Austin. Is there any discussion on any of those reports? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight a's, zero nays. Item 14 is referrals to committees. Is this where you're at, Jake? Go ahead.
This is where I'm at. So, I'd like to make a referral to the finance and property. And I'll send you an email, Tom, just to go over the financials of the Aquatic Center to date in the month of August. I know we still have a month left, but I'd like to take a look at those. And I'd also like to give a huge shout-out to everyone involved in making the Aquatic Center go. So, staff and employees who work outside of the Aquatic Center and those that work there. I've gone there a lot this summer and spoke with folks around the community, and it really is a gem in our city. Everything there moves extremely well and smooth. Last week, I was there, and there was a larger family from out of town, and some of them were from some of southern Wisconsin. One part of the family was stationed over in Germany, but they were all from here, and they had came back to visit for ski show weekend, and they were just going on and on about how great it was to have that, how they wished they had it in their town. So, it's definitely something we should be proud of, and I wanted to thank those who are involved.
Thank you, Jake. We'll get Tim crunching the numbers. Are there any other referrals? Okay, seeing none. We're on to item number 15, adjournment.
So, move.
We have a motion by Raum, seconded by Catnaugh. If you can do a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 And all opposed. Motion carries. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.